This education in public service announcement is brought to you by Citizens of a Better Schools and Sustainable Community, where we're structuring schools for success, making the vision work for all students regardless of where they may live and attend school. Anniston community leaders and residents showed up in large numbers at a recent council meeting. They were there to push and get support for one-to-one handheld devices and upgrades in technology for Anniston City School students. They're not letting this issue go. One by one, they approached the mic and weighed in on this hot issue.
...here and still a little heartbreaking, hard trauma for this city on its last hope of wood, should, could, and all of this. Anytime it comes to our kids, we have to hesitate. But when we come to bike trails and everything, we give a high praise. And so I just want that everybody that here in this city, I want them to understand this. We're not gonna give up on our kids. And we're not gonna take that would and should as accepted as you think we are, because we're not. And if we have to, we will start protesting in the city. We're gonna take care of our kids, you can believe that. If you ain't got to love them, well, we will. And so I just want you to know, we got a packed house tonight. I want them to understand that we not here for no more than asking what everybody else around in this area already have. Jack Drake, thank you.
From 58 Sunset Drive. I have lived in Anniston for my entire life. I truly believe that it could be one of the more desirable places to live in the United States. We have a good climate, beautiful scenery, nice courteous people, very few traffic issues in close proximity to two great cities, Atlanta and Birmingham, with many things to do, and one of those also has the largest airport in the world. So why, with all these advantages, why is our countywide population dropping? Well, one big reason is that the largest city in County City Anniston has an education system that industries and new businesses are not attracted to. It's my understanding that TONDA executives suggested to all their employees that were living in our area when they built their plant that they consider locating in Lincoln, Oxford, or Arundel School Districts. Anniston was not even considered. Why do you think this is? Let's face it, the Anniston School System does not attract business growth. And when the subject of what to do about Anniston Schools comes up, the answer has always been, "It can't be fixed." Well, it can be fixed. And if we want growth, board and better jobs, increased opportunities, it's not an easy fix, but we have to change our approach. If the first thing that comes out of our mouth is that it can't be fixed, then it won't ever change. Another thing that keeps Anniston from growing is the long-time turmoil in our city council. All council members should represent their constituents by reaching out to new industries and businesses to come to Anniston and Calvin County, not blocking them by threatening to actually filing lawsuits that scare them away and block growth. If your ward's council member tells you that he is acting in your best interest by scaring away businesses that would bring you new job opportunities, then that representative of your ward is really hurting you, not helping you. So I'm asking every citizen of Anniston to remember, the council members need to do what is best for the growth of our city and our county by doing everything they can to attract new retailers, manufacturers, hotels, restaurants, and other developments. Sales tax and business developments have allowed Oxford to have many nice things that Anniston cannot afford. New cities and growth bring more taxes, better roads and infrastructure, better education, higher real estate values, and better paychecks. Our representatives should help represent us by being positive and not pushing their own agenda or stopping growth. Council members tend to do what is best for their constituents, which may not be in line with their personal preferences. So I'm asking all council members elected by each ward to be positive, stay on task, don't be disruptive, and most of all, work together for the good of all Annisonians. I have also a question I would like to ask the mayor and the city attorney to answer sometime. Why are the Roberts rules of order not following all of our council meetings rather than there being so many disruptive statements paid by one person over and over? Thank you.
I just want everybody in this room to close their eyes for me. And follow me. I'm a student at Anniston, in the Anniston City School District. My city want to put a bike trail in my city when I can't even read. I can't even use a computer. I don't even have job skills. I don't even know how to speak in puddle- puddling. What am I to do? What's more important, for me to ride a bike or for me to learn? We are letting our kids down. You can open your eyes now. Think about it, guys. I grew up in Anniston. I was born in R and C when I was 45 years old. When I came up, the school was a mixed population. I learned just the way as to white kids, the Mexican kids, and all of the other kids. Our kids nowadays do not have that opportunity. Our kids nowadays can't even write or type up a resume, can't even fill out an application. When I was 16 years old, I worked at Burger King. Our kids can't do it now because they don't know how. We're not teaching our kids. And all the council is doing is teaching them how to order, teach them how to fight, teach them how to stand up for themselves. But we as adults, we supposed to stand up for our kids. Card 3K is out there. We lost so many teachers out there. Our three O's can't start, but some of the other three O's are already started. We're behind. We're so behind that it's pitiful. They don't even know how to boil ramen noodles. They don't know how to read on the back of ingredients to know what's good for their system and what's not. When are we gonna start standing up for our kids? We don't need a bike trail. We need education.
My name is Karen Skiles-Freeman. I live at 2507 Paul Street, Anniston, Anniston. I come here, I'm a product of Anniston High. And I say, can say that I've done well as a product of Anniston High. Not everybody is afforded the same thing. Like Erica said, back then it was mixed. People cared about the education. Now it's predominantly black. They don't care. And my question is, number one, why is Jay Jenkins still sitting on the city council? Well, you know, we don't care about the kids. We can't continue to allow people to keep our children in oppression because that's what they're setting out to do. We, there's, and I travel, my job, I travel all over this country and out of the country. And there are some places I go and people say, "That's way from old." It's always negative. They don't say, "Oh, it's the black side of town or the white side of town." It's Anniston as a whole. So when you talk about the city of Anniston, it's a whole, people outside of this state don't know it's one side or the other, one school. They're just looking at the whole city of Anniston. It doesn't look good at all. And until somebody has the guts to stand up and do, try to do something for these kids, we're not going away. We're here, we're gonna fight for these kids. I don't care what, Midda, Jay, Jay, anybody. You can talk to them. Right, oh, I have been always talking because you care. And somebody has to. And it's obvious. And until you all get it together and decide you're gonna help these kids, if we have to get out, I get out here and march to the street by myself if I have to. Enough is enough. Thank you.
My name is Harold Ray. I live in 95 High Street, Jonesville, Anniston. Not you with the other mayor and the other city council. Their name on the ballpark after my father. It's called Bennington Ballpark. And their name, the street, after my father. It's called Bennington Street. Now, that was the reason for the city of Anniston to do that. That was simply because my father done things for kids in this city going back 40 and 50 years ago. That he wanted, that the city itself wanted him to have these names and these parks and these streets. Now, what I don't understand is why there's such a complication about laptops and a computer for children. It's not about a personal vendetta or black and white issue like we like to fall on and wipe on by black and white. It's not about that. It's about a promise that was made to these children.
I'm gonna chat with every lawyer you represented between you. Join with me. Happened to set up a special education scholarship fund for little children who's gonna affect it by what's happening.
Join with the mayor and everybody else. Honorable Johnny Cochran, the old standing lawyer stood on the steps of the Calvin County Courthouse and promised the city of Anniston that these kids would get laptops and computers. That was in 2003. Now, here it is, 2017, so that will be 14 years. And most of the schools have computers and laptops. So why it's so complicated, the word WH1 for Anniston High, children to have computers and laptops and Wi-Fi to answer their service? We hark on our crimes and the things that's going on in our city, but we gonna all have to work together to correct this issue. So why make it complicated by holding up some laptops and computers? Thank you and God bless you.
Then former Anniston mayor Bill Robertson blasted councilman Ben Little for allegedly running off businesses.
I've lived here 68 of my 78 years, and I'm here to congratulate one of you. I've never done this. And I'm not gonna name the individual, but I'm gonna let all y'all figure out who I'm talking about. There's one person seated at this podium who has done more in the entire life of this city to bring it down, to damage it, to give it a bad name, to stand in the way of progress. I don't want any names. It's on the tip of everybody's tongue. I want that person to get out his oath of office and study it and decide how meaningless lawsuits, frivolous lawsuits, continually attacking other council members, standing in the way of progress, has helped this city move half a step forward instead of 20,000 steps backward. It cannot be defended. I am no expert in history, but it will stand to the test of time that that has happened with one member of this council who is on his third term on Anniston.
Fourth.
Fourth. I don't have to name him. He named himself. Thank you very much. I ask you, please, I'm not gonna beg you for anything. You have not hurt me personally except in one particular area, and that is the value of my home. You personally, I believe, have had a decided effect on that because you have kept industry from coming here. You have thwarted industry in some cases. You have given them a signal that, "I ain't getting into that bed." Have you put these other people in their place? Absolutely. Thumbs up. By God, you put them in their place on this council and on your other three, three, not four, three councils. And I hope to God four is the last one. You put them in their place, but you know what else you've done? You have kept the kids of your black constituents, I won't say in their place, because then you're gonna jump on me as being a racist when you're as big as there is in town.
This is not a time for the council to dialogue with Mr. Robertson.
You will. You have not kept them in their place, but you have denied them opportunity after opportunity to have employment opportunities, to have income coming into this city where this city can do the things of coming up with $200,000 a year, if that's what you decide. And I don't think you have now. And you can thank yourself and I congratulate you. I don't have a plaque, but I may get one. Thank you.
The rules are council members cannot respond to community members. So councilman Little leaves his council seat and fires back at Robertson with his rebuttal as an ordinary citizen.
Y'all can take a deep breath. Only thing I wanna say. Before I got here, I heard about Budweiser supposedly coming here. And some people stopped that. I reckon Ben Little stopped that before he got here. Before I got here, I heard about the interstate was coming through Anniston. I guess Ben Little stopped that. The sewer plan, I wanna put that down in Archer because that's just a little big town. Drop it off down there. Put the interstate through there. They can go there. From my understanding, since Mr. Robertson called my name, I think when he was the mayor, he tried to annex Saks. And they told him we'll take a hike. But I guess Ben Little was under counsel then too. His action, his bullying ways, like to try to say, "I am, but I'm a gentle man." It's like this. It is like this. It is like this. Just because Ben Little stands up for the kids and stands up for the people in this community, white and blacks, they call me all the time. Just because, and you haven't seen nothing yet, the truth crushed to the ground shall rise again. The application no one can write you back, and this is Ben. My bat's not Ben. My speech is not impaired. I'm gonna say what I have to say on behalf of the kids, on behalf of this community. And in business, understand one thing, that there are gonna be some dispute and arguments in politics. If you don't believe it, look at Washington, DC. Look at Columbia and Montgomery. Look in Anniston. There'll be some, "Why you think these people are here tonight?" There's a racial divide in the city. A thousand-pound elephant in the room, and you don't wanna talk about it. Our kids, I'm gonna stand up for them, get what they deserve and what they need in this community. I'm gonna stand up for the people of War 3 and get what they're supposed to have. I know the budget. I'm looking at it. We can do better. And we do, we will do better. But I'm not through. But people can get money from what I have. People on the council can get money for their families and friends, and that's all right. Shut up, Ben Little. Don't say nothing about that. That's like the devil when Jesus showed up. Leave me alone. I'm not bothering you. Let me continue to bother these people. Ben Little's not gonna be quiet. Ben Little's not gonna be quiet. And Ben Little did not cause trouble to leave here. Businesses leave here. It's a large threat from the hellish devil to mouth themselves. I'll be back.
See, there's only two ways out. I'm gonna get my education. I'm gonna make something out of myself. I ain't gonna go there and say, "A drug, go to jail and make that my life." So now I got a lot of crime I got to deal with. So along with this crime, I keep my courtroom filled and some money go from hand to hand. That's crazy. But they call that politic. The thing about jail, my children don't know nothing about politic. All they know is they wake up in the morning, go to school, get their lesson. But it's hard to get a lesson when I don't wanna get a school, a computer. But I'm gonna be at the police department, some computers, so they catch my kid when he drop out. That's just crazy. Screw my language, but that's crazy.
The owner of an Anniston restaurant, Taiwon On, says he's been here five years. And as a business owner, looking in on Anniston, he would not have moved his business here because of the turmoil, division, and reputation of the council and city of Anniston.
You know, and not, not, from what I see, it's just so much argument between you guys, between the council, between the city, between blacks or white, you know. I just want everybody to look at themselves first. I mean, we love the city, but what, what, what can we do? That's all. That means, that's, I want, I want everybody to see that. It's not, it's not pretty. And it's only, you know, from the outside, not, not pretty because you guys can't get along. We can't communicate. We cannot. We love the kids, but yet we, we can't bring the business in to help the kids. Think about that. You can help the kids. How, how can we help the kids? Okay? Give them books. Where the money's coming from. I pay a lot of taxes. Everybody pay a lot of taxes. I know, I know that. And if we don't create some kind of business like me coming in here, if somebody like me does wanna come here, you're not a drug. Kids don't get a book, not a computer. So fix it. Everybody know how. I promise you, the reason you're here, I know you guys know how. I look at your faces. You're very smart people. You know how to do it. Please just do it. Okay? Just do it. Get together and just find out how. Don't point finger. Don't, don't, you know, just find out how. Please. Thank you.
We got some great things happening in the city of Anniston. Bike trails, the school system. We can all work together to make those things happen. I don't understand the division. The bike trail, for one, can bring money to the school system if we all just come together. That's, that's the part I don't get. We spend the time arguing, saying it's a race thing or anything like that. Also, there's power in the talk too. So if we're gonna constantly say that our kids can't read, our kids can't even make moves and stuff like that, that's what, that's what's gonna happen. So we have to change that.
I've heard a lot of rhetoric tonight. A lot of rhetoric. But I've heard no solutions. All I heard is talk about division. And we teaching our children division. Success is all about compromise. Anybody in your was married, understand compromise. And if you don't understand compromise, you go your own ways, like we're doing here tonight. We don't understand compromise, so we go in our own ways. This city will never survive in our current path. It's impossible. I don't care who fault it is. It's enough blame to go around for everybody in this room. Everybody. Because I see everybody have their own little pet peeve they wanna deal with. At the end of the day, this is not about you guys. It ain't about me. It's about our future, our children. And when you deal with this, you need economic development. I was a businessman in this town. And my company wouldn't bring growth here, I work for BA Systems, wouldn't bring growth here, or bring people here because of the educational system. Okay? It ain't just Anniston by itself. It's the educational system in our county. You can, you can put it on Anniston school system. And we'll carry it away. But it ain't all about Anniston. Now, I work for a defense company. So the way you fight wars anymore is different than the past. It used to be one-on-one force, where tank against tank. It's not like that now. It's by technology. Okay? Aircraft, computers. So if you have a group of people, no matter who you are, that's not technology savvy, you are behind. And you will be a statistic. This city will be a statistic if we don't grow technology-wise. Period. So for me, it's all about solutions. And if we don't talk about a solution with this group, with this group, we won't have a solution for this city. Houston out.
On another note, Anniston Police got approved to get upgrades to their technology.
It will be a motion for the evaluation bids for the purchase of 10 or more rugged laptop computers for the Anniston Police Department. Would you present that to us, Mr. Sally?
Yes, sir. Motion that the bid should be awarded to Dell EMC in a total amount of $13,525.90 for 10 or more rugged laptop computers for the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Sally. Is there a, a motion for acceptance of the bid?
So moved.
There's a second. Counsel discussion.
There are more. I think we're talking about the other lady. There are more. It's 12.
It's my understanding that we will be getting 10, but we had 17,000 budgeted in the F2017 budget limit. Then that number, that estimate was based off the state bid list price. Whenever we received the bid, it came in under that. So they have a little bit of wiggle room. But it's my understanding that there will be 10 purchased this year.
And this is for laptops, right?
Rugged laptops for the police department.
Which is a good thing because they need that technology to be able to do their job, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's a good thing that we, we should support our police department and their laptops.
Any additional discussion as to the acceptance of the bid at issue? There appear to be none. Police call roll.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the motion.
And like someone said, you know, we're getting for them, but we wanna, don't wanna do anything to help our kids so they can stay out of the system. The police need their technology, and our kids need the technology. And they need to keep up on things, and our kids need to keep up on education. And so it's amazing how that can take place. And then the bike company, the bike people said they need 60, a little over $60,000 for the staff position up on Coldwater Mountain. I think that's a wonderful idea. How crazy.
And finally, there was a resolution to open bids for new one-to-one handheld devices for Anniston City Schools, a step in the right direction.
It was mentioned in the pre-agenda meeting that mayor and council would like a motion on tonight's agenda for city staff to solicit bids for, I guess, the one-to-one devices that was mentioned in the, the plan submitted by Dr. Stewart.
Public Education Foundation, not Dr. Stewart.
Thank you for the clarification. And so the motion would be to, of course, city staff to solicit bids for the purchase of one-to-one devices according to the Public Education Foundation plan for the Anniston City School.
For the potential purchase, because we will obviously be debating this as we begin our budget discussions tomorrow. And we'll be speaking about that again.
Once we receive the bid, we will bring it back before you all, so you'll have the calls and you can debate that during the voting process.
Thank you, Mr. Sally.
You know, this whole county, we, we all need to update our systems. And that's what we're trying to do. This is, the big argument was we needed to take bids. So this is our opportunity to take bids. And I expect this kind of participation to come out in support of the bids once they come out because our kids are our future. We gotta love them. And, and that's the bottom line. And every other school, other school systems, I pay for their kids to have these handheld devices. And I think we should do, and I say the minimums because our school ain't all bad.
Here's what Anniston Star said. Now, they won't say this in the neighborhood. Here's what Anniston Star said. Pay it forward. State should put priority on educating inmates. So Anniston Star said, "Send them to prison and educate them." This is what the opinion page said. Now, they won't, they're probably in here somewhere, but you won't see that in Anniston Star, that Ben Little said that. Put them, send them to prison. And all we're trying to do.
Anybody that feels, that owns a business and feels like the city can't afford to buy these laptops, we take donations. You guys can commit to as many laptops or handheld devices as you want and, and donate that money to the city. And we'll put it all towards our kids. So we accept donations. If you feel like the city can't afford it, we are accepting donations. You can earmark it, one-to-one devices or Anniston City Schools, and we'll make sure that that money gets to that purpose. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, the court, please, call roll.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes!
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the motion passes.
So one, King Creek is about a little over $600,000. And maybe we look at RFPing that out. And I think we may have someone that wanna take that. And the city gives them incentive. And we may save about $400,000 if we privatize it, a private, a public-private relationship. So we're looking at, well, hopefully we can get that done. And we'll cut some expenses there.
This education in public service announcement is brought to you by Citizens of a Better Schools and Sustainable Community, where we're structuring schools for success, making the vision work for all students regardless of where they may live.
regardless of where they may live and attend school.